Let me call this council meeting to order. Thank you for coming. Welcome to the October 10th council meeting. I'm showing at 7:30, 2:00 P.M. Ms. R.C.C., could you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Barker?
Here.
Ms. Darrow. Ms. Darrow is absent due to a family death. Mr. Engel?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Moller?
Here.
Very good, Josephine. I'd like to ask our council president, Ken Martin, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, after which Nick Moller, council vice president, will lead us in tonight's invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are thankful for this day you have given us for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Next on the agenda are the minutes of September 26, 2013. Any changes, or do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. And next, we have a financial report.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to acknowledge receipt of the financial report dated August 31, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. All right. Next part of our meeting is public comments. In order for us to keep public comments orderly, we have asked people to sign in prior to the meeting, and we have a couple of signatures tonight. So I'm gonna start off with Sandro Santoli, and ask him to please keep his presentation to five minutes.
I'd like to withdraw my request.
Thank you. Next is John Casmer.
I'm John Casmer, 35-year resident of Macedonia, and I representing the Longwood Manor Historical Society. We're a nonprofit group of unpaid volunteers restoring the Longwood Manor at no cost to the city, and hoping to reopen it to the public again as it was in the past. I have two announcements, both good news. We have three more contractors donating their services to fixing the Manor now, and we're presently working on waterproofing the exposed foundation, which was cited as a violation by the Building Department. The work will be completed, finished very shortly, and ready for inspection. Second point is, we were required by the city ordinance passed earlier this year, in 2013, to obtain architectural plans for restoring Longwood Manor. We have done that. We hired an architect who has been working on these plans. He's been, had meetings with the Building Department, he's seen the Manor, he's been getting input from us about the intended use of the Manor. He's been getting, he has been talking to the Building Department to get their perspective and their input on the issues relating to the Manor, and there are many. So we now have a plan that he has put together. We're gonna plan, present to the Planning Commission October 28th, the 28th meeting. I have to make the application. We're getting the finalized plans back from him now. And I just want to say that this is, the architect who's working with us has really, he's really done an outstanding job for us in assimilating all the information together from what we'd like to do with the Manor, with getting input from the Building Department on what the issues are that we have to be sure to address. So we're going forward, I think, with a good plan. It's an open meeting. I'm addressing this to the residents now on the 28th, I guess at 5:30 is when it starts. I urge people to come to the Planning Commission meeting. It's an open meeting, and find out, you know, what our plans are. This is your inheritance. This is the house that was willed to the residents by the first mayor of Macedonia in 1983, William Long. Thank you.
We're gonna move right on into pending and/or new legislation, starting with ordinance number 95-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 95-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Kyle Horish to the position of full-time police officer. I hope I said that correctly.
And what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post ordinance 2013 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Welcome aboard. Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moller?
Yes.
Well, I would say ordinance number 95-2013 passes. Kyle is in the audience. Kyle, why don't you stand up and introduce who you're with for us, please?
This is my mother, Jan, my father, Robert.
Very good. You did a good job.
Thank you.
And Kyle, don't worry, the blood and feeling is coming back in my hand after you shook it. Okay. Good luck to you, young man. You're a fine specimen. We're glad to have you. Moving on, ordinance number 96-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 96-2013 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance changing the pay grade of the Assistant Building Commissioner from pay grade nine to pay grade 11 and amending ordinance 47-2012.
Next, we have ordinance number 97-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 97-2013 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending ordinance 42-2013 with regard to the pay grade for the position of full-time and administrative assistant of the Macedonia Service Department.
Next, we have ordinance number 98-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 98-2013 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance establishing the part-time position of Public Records Clerk within the Office of the Mayor and establishing compensation therefor.
Next is ordinance number 99-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 99-2013 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance, excuse me, an emergency ordinance amending the codified ordinance section 1171-15B to allow a storage bin, oh, excuse me, a storage barn, I'm so sorry, as a non-residential use in a residential district.
Next, we have resolution number 100-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution 100-2013 for a first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
A resolution appointing Gary Ennis to the Civil Service Commission in order to fill a recent vacancy.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post resolution 100-2013 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moller?
For those that don't know, Mr. Ennis was a police officer in town for how many years?
Twenty-five and a half.
Twenty-five years. Man, a great character. I support you 100 percent. Glad to have you. Yes.
Resolution number 100-2013 passes. Gary, thank you. Being a commissioner means giving up a little bit of your life. You don't get paid, but you have to come down, and you have to have meetings, and the meetings held are very important because that's how we maintain the quality of our Police and Fire Department. So, thank you for volunteering. Resolution number 101-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number 101-2013 for first, second reading by title, first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
A resolution repealing ordinance number 76-2013 relating to the amendment of the zoning map of the City of Macedonia to rezone certain land from R1 Resident District to RSC Senior Citizen Residential District and R2 Resident District.
And what's your pleasure?
Before we go there, I'd just like to explain to the people who may be watching and those in the audience that the, or the item is still gonna appear on the budget, but we're removing it at the...
At the ballot.
The ballot.
Yes, at the ballot. I'm sorry. But we're removing it officially at the request of the landowner. So with that, even though you vote on it, or you may vote on it, it really will, it will not pass. I've moved that we pass and post according to law, resolution 101-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moller?
Yes.
Resolution number 101-2013 passes. Just so you know, this land still can be built on. So there were some residents that were very concerned about what was going to be built there. It is R1 right now, so housing could be there. R2 is, opens the door for things that people felt concerned about, and I think fellow, faith fellowship wanted to be a good neighbor, so they said, let's hold back a little bit until we can put people at ease. Moving back to resolution number 102-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution 102-2013 for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the township of Northfield Center, Ohio, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement with Golden Link LLC.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law, resolution 2000, or, excuse me, resolution number 102-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moller?
Yes.
Resolution number 102-2013 passes. All right, what was this about? If you remember, going back years from a satellite picture, the Army Corps of Engineers picked up that there was a mound in the land that was designated as conservancy and as a wetland. It's actually located behind the Great Escape, if you're familiar with where that is. So they said, that can't be there. Well, it just so happens that, excuse me, that's in Macedonia property right there. So we have to move that mound. Nobody knew where the mound came from. It probably happened as the shopping center was being developed. We were going into having the developer remove the mound, and that went south. And I'd like to compliment Jim DiGatano by taking the bow by the horns and saying, Mayor, I'm gonna get that mound out of there before we get a fine, and we've taken it upon ourself and are doing the job actually internally to meet the specs of the Army Corps of Engineers. It's being done with our people, but it'll be paid for by Northfield Center and by the developer, and of course, our input is the men's. So thank you very much, Jim, for doing this. Appreciate it. All right. Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the Chief of Police to accept on behalf of the City of Macedonia a donation from Macedonia resident Jordan Benner of Ohio Technical College of a vehicle body and paint restoration performed on a 2011 Crown Victoria, now used in the detective bureau, and the mountain valued at $888.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. And we thank Jordan very much. I see the chief's not here right now. Excuse me, I oughta have him give you a little rundown. Is there any correspondence from the clerk this evening?
No, sir.
Moving on, then, the mayor's report. The City of Macedonia has location, location, location. In order to take advantage of that, we needed to improve our infrastructure, and during the past decade, we've been doing just that. In order to keep our real estate taxes down, to fully develop the revenues received from city income tax, we need to have retail, sales, manufacturing, office buildings. And in order to have that, we need to have easily accessible to existing and new businesses. And that means not only being in a great location, but you gotta be able to get in and out of the city easily. Ever since completing the Route 82 widening and new railroad bridge, we've witnessed a growth in the revenues of city income tax each year since 2009. That's about when the bridge was completed. We've seen revenues from city income tax increasing every month, and we did have a temporary levy on, but the increases were even though we had that levy, it was exclusive of that levy. It helped having that levy, but it's not the only reason, and we have turned our finances around. I think the infrastructure update improvement plan is working. I think this trend will continue with the now-completed Highland Road Bridge, and we continue to see positive financial growth. This month, I've been approached about one of our abandoned buildings. It's been abandoned for years on Highland. Actually, now that the Highland Road Bridge is done, and people are starting to see the advantage of that, the word is out. Macedonia is the place to be in business. Another sign we're getting recognized and very accessible, and exactly the best place to be, is that I was approached by Tesla. Tesla's an electric car company in California. The car has zero emissions, so Tesla's earned more than $137 million in zero credit emissions from the state of California alone. They're using those funds to build 237 supercharging stations across the country so that traveling cross-country will be possible with their car. They usually have about a 300-mile range. They want us to have one of their supercharging stations. That in itself is a testimonial of being in the right place at the right time. They're coming into our next Planning Commission meeting. The supercharging station will be located in the north end of the Commons parking lot, approximately across some steak and shake. There's nothing there but some parking spaces, and I don't think anybody ever really uses those parking spaces. It will simply consist of a modem-type device with cords, much like, similar-looking to a gasoline pump, only instead of gas coming out of a hose, you have an electric cord. The charging is free to the car owners, so there's no money that changes hands there for the charging of the car. A complete charge takes about 45 minutes or so, leaving plenty of time to make use of the surrounding retail and dining business. You're within walking distance of a lot of good places to eat and shop. I think this is a win-win situation. It's a great way for Tesla to make people aware of their product, and for us, think about it, Macedonia will be on yet another map as a destination. I am hoping that we don't encounter any problems so we can bring this feather in our cap home to roost, but that's still in the works. After years of fighting in council chambers, meeting rooms, and the courts, we finally beaten back the NEORSD with the ruling that basically confirms what we have claimed all along. Fees charged by the NEORSD are taxation without representation. So if you have a bill from Cleveland Water that has an NEORSD charge on it, do not pay it. Just pay the water bill. Now alls we have to do is figure out how we're gonna get back and pry out of their gritty little hands $15 million that has been sent to the NEORSD for stormwater fees out of their fingers. Now, they're gonna appeal that, and they say they wanna put the money in escrow. That doesn't fly with me. I don't think it flies with any of you out there. We want our money back. You know, and after all of the time that Macedonia spent at the forefront of trying to stop this in every way that we could, they actually called me and asked me to sign an amicus brief. What's an amicus brief? Well, it's a form of complaint that the judgment was not to be, it shouldn't be. You know what? I would never sell out any of my residents and sign that paper, and I hope to God any other public officials will think exactly the same way. Do not sell us out. We're out of it, and we're gonna stay out. I met with representatives from Cleveland Water, another nasty word, at luncheon meeting on Wednesday, and during our conversation, we discussed several sore spots that our residents have with their new automatic meter readers, and also about the money they owe us for street repairs caused by broken water mains. Maybe it was the food, there was no drink, but I'm optimistic. The way they talked, our constant nipping at their heels is starting to aim them, nudge them towards settlement for the costs incurred by the city for water main breaks and better responses to meter complaints. So, what used to happen, and happens to us, is the water pipe that breaks is maybe as big as this nameplate, and the street above it is all they pay for it to be fixed. But because that water main broke, the water moved out, went under the road, it actually eroded away dirt, it eroded away the base of the highway, the road could collapse, someone could be hurt. So we won't let that go. We fix it. And we're fixing it and saying, the reason we have to fix it is because your water main broke. And they say, no, it isn't. The street needed to be fixed anyway, and it's just not true. They just don't take care of complaints. So, if we can get some kind of movement in that direction, anything we get, to me, is a plus. Remember, we have an app available for Androids, iPhones, and other smartphones. Using that app makes communicating with your problems, your concerns, or your questions to the City of Macedonia just a matter of a few taps. And you can actually watch a council meeting on your smartphone. And don't forget to take some time, go on our website so that you get the messenger. The messenger goes out every month. The messenger is our way of keeping you informed as to what's happening within our town. And lastly, the receipts from Mayor's Court for the month of September were $30,179.19. And that concludes my report. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Macedonia Atlantic Commission's next meeting is Tuesday because of the Columbus Day holiday, October 15th at 5:30 P.M.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other committee reports? Moving on, Jim, department reports.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you know, the mayor said to you, the NEORSD can no longer collect fees, so it will no longer honor any community share of funding that they said they were gonna do. That includes the handicap spots at the rec center. That's voided. So luckily, we didn't start, because if we would've started, we would've got stuck with the bill. So, as an example, like the mound, we're supposed to be covered by that. But by doing it with our own service department, and working with Nick Feeney, Mike, and Scott's been working with us on the financial end, we'll keep an accounting of all our labor, material, and equipment, and that will be covered by Department, Department total. Okay? We have that. And once you sign that tonight with Mr. Deener and Deener and Associates that made this plan, so that'll work. So everything we're doing will be covered. We're not gonna get stuck with anything. The North Bedford Phase Two, we're gonna be able to use our own stormwater money for that, because again, we're using service department people. We're more, we don't need any appropriations, we don't need any more funding, we have enough money in our own stormwater to cover it. So that also will get done. And then Phase Three we're going to next year, as we talked about before. Rec Center, they're getting the roof done. They're working on it now. It might be done, might be completed tomorrow, or the latest, the first part of next week, it'll be complete. Let's see, the rain barrel class is canceled. We don't need rain barrels. You don't want it, you don't need it. So, that's canceled. If you still want one, or anyone wants one, I'll still get it for you. So, you know, that's up to you. Leaf season will start October 21st, and it's gonna end December 7th. We'll start on the south end of town and work our way north, and we'll hit every street three times. What we're asking is, which always happens every year, a lot of people wait till the last minute, we're asking you to rake and rake often, and we'll get these leaves picked up for you. And we have our, new machine should be in by the end of next week, the one that we purchased this year. And that's it. That's all I have to report.
And maybe you wanna talk a little bit about the cooperation and collaboration that you're getting us into with, Jim and I have been going to service director and mayor meetings, and we're looking at everything from borrowing, renting, using other people's equipment, and possibly even getting funding. So thank you for getting us involved in that too, Jim. All right, Mike?
Been getting a lot of calls about the trailer park up off of North Bedford. There is a new owner involved. They have already taken out some of the old trailers. They're gonna now institute background checks, I believe, credit checks as well, and they're cleaning up the property. It's gonna be a 55 and older community. If you're not 55 and older right now, I think there's a handful of people that aren't. They are, they could stay, but the new people coming in are gonna be 55 and older. They are bringing in new trailers. It's all under the jurisdiction of the Ohio Manufactured Homes Commission. They have complete control over inspection in all of the trailers there. They took that back in 2008, I wanna say, from the cities, and then as of last year, they took it from Summit County Health Department, so they have complete control over the park. We're still gonna enforce our zoning laws there, and of course, building, if they're putting any kind of sheds or decks or anything like that, or utility work. But hopefully, the people watching answer some of the questions. It looks like it's gonna be a big improvement to the park. Residential update, we have new homes, starts of 37, homes under construction 56. We have 12 additions and 42 alterations. concludes my report.
And you're busy.
Yes.
Andrew?
Thank you.
Thank you. We had a lot of activity going on at the recreation center this week alone, we had furniture deliveries, game table replacements, those were delivered as well. We've had mirrors installed in the space that was previously occupied by the Cleveland Clinic, that's the beginning phases of converting that space into a multipurpose studio, so that, the beginning phase of that has begun, which is exciting, and then as Jim had mentioned, the roof repairs are almost complete, and hopefully will be completed by tomorrow. We do have some classes coming up with some deadlines to register for, we have a sign language class, which is available for ages 12 and up, so if anyone is interested in learning sign language, the deadline to register for that is October 15th. We also have a sign, say, and play class, which is another sign language class, but this is designed for parents to attend with their children six months to three, three years of age, so that they can take that class together and learn to communicate together at a young, young stage. We, lastly, have a, another bus trip coming up, which is to the Meadows Casino in Washington, Pennsylvania, and that is scheduled for Tuesday, October 29th, that leaves from the recreation center and returns to the recreation center, the deadline to register for that is October 22nd. Thank you.
All right, I have a question back here, young man. Go ahead, come on up to the front.
I was wondering how much the say and play class is for the children?
Let's see, it ranges from $65 to $70.
And it starts what day?
That starts on October 21st, it's a Monday, it starts on Monday nights.
All right, Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. We met again today with the healthcare task force, which is members of representatives from each department and the unions to pick a carrier, as I've reported in the past, BORMA, our healthcare provider that we've had for the last three and a half years, our contract runs out, and they had a projected cost increase of over 28 percent. We have a meeting next Thursday that me and Betsy, our HR director, will attend, and at that point, they're supposed to give us the final rates for next year, but we've entertained three proposals, and the mayor, and Joe Deemer's office, Tom Hanslick, and as well as Betsy, have all been involved in reviewing the proposals, as well as our task force, and we need to have legislation in place at the next council meeting, October 24th, because for the transition period of not only leaving, possibly leaving the pool, but also signing up with whoever healthcare provider that we select, we expect, some of the proposals are, they look very good as far as what we, anticipation of that 28 percent, and we're hoping we'd go with the same level of expertise and, that we have, and probably almost save a little bit of money from some of the projections that we have, so council will be obviously informed of that decision, and the legislation will be brought forward. So that's all I have at this time.
And that was a matter of about two or three minutes, but it's describing hours and hours and hours of work between you and Betsy and our law department, and I appreciate it, thank you.
As well as Tom. Tom's been very instrumental in the law department, going over, making sure we're doing everything right on the run-loss claims, and a lot of the details to make sure we leave the pool and we're not stuck with any other costs, so I appreciate all the work that Tom...
Well, it's good for the employees, and it's good for our taxpayers, because what we're doing is negotiating the best care that we can get for the best price.
Yes.
All right, Nick, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, just had one item to mention, that AMATS is currently soliciting letters of intent for, applications for federal surface transportation dollars. These applications are due October 18th, and we're wrapping up a couple of projects that we will submit to the city to then be forwarded to AMATS. We're looking at Valley View Road from 82 to the South Corp, and we are also looking at a citywide signal upgrade project. That's it.
Good stuff, thank you. That's the advantage of having an engineering department, that we have an engineer, he's kept very busy on a daily basis, but he's part of a bigger operation, and the bigger operation is also watching where monies will become available. So we have our cake and eat it too, we have somebody doing our engineering, yet on the other hand, still watching out for ways the city can get monies to do what needs to be done. Thank you, Nick, good job. Joe?
Mayor, just to add on to the comments I already made, the removal of the mound, we negotiated and you signed tonight the contract, and council approved, you're signing it guarantees that Golden Link or the departmental company will pay for all of the removal of this dirt relocation and protection of the wetland and restoration of it. This is on our property, jointly owned by us and Northfield Center, and as a result, the Army Corps of Engineer could find each of us significantly every day that that continues, and we've been able to negotiate stays and extensions for years, and then ultimately to get the private company to pay all costs, so in the end, Macedonia or Northfield will incur any expense. The attorney for the Norfolk Southern Railroad contacted me today, and they have hired local counsel in Ohio, who is now on the job and has been authorized to sit and negotiate with me about the restoration of the bridge and the legal requirements, and they are responding to my letter to them of a couple weeks ago, threatening our legal action, so he was very cordial and interested in having me hold off any further action for a few weeks or a few days to have, he wanted a few weeks, I gave him a few days, in order to come to some kind of solution and recommendation that he'll make to the railroad to get that bridge fixed and corrected temporarily and then permanently.
Fantastic.
So that was good news, good conversation today. The lawyer's out of Cincinnati, he does this all over Ohio for the railroad, so at least we got somebody within the state who knows state law here, that can talk with us.
That's great, Joe, really, really good. All right, is there any unfinished business we have for tonight?
Yes, Mayor, a little while back, we approved our festival for next year, used to be called the Fun Fest, and I had thrown out that we were going to rename it, we're allowing a child under the age of 13 to put a submission in to rename that. We're going to bolster that up a little bit, I've reached out to council, and we're up to $200, we're going to give, in a gift card, to a child whose name of the festival we choose, so, I know we have it on the website, I believe?
Yep.
We have it at the Parks and Rec Center, and we have it at City Hall, and I think we're going to try and get something online with the app as well, so if you have a child under the age of 13 that could think of a name for the festival next year, I would encourage it, and we're all pretty excited about it. Thanks.
Good stuff. Anything else this evening? Any new business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So made, Mayor.
Do I have second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming.